Okay.
Phil, I brought our box today.
Oh, you did yours just jump and Amy did mine. Is that my name right?
All in the range.
Look at them. They are good.
We can be just fine. We have the rules.
Yeah.
No. Sounds nice. Well, isn't it great?
Oh, is that not great?
They're really good. Yes.
Mine's applying.
The hard part for us was this.
We just let the public speak. Take their questions, write them down, send, we can talk. You can speak to them. They avoid their concerns. Wait, wait. So that revision. Speak on other questions.
All right. We're going to get going at seven o'clock. As vice chair, I am going to hold this meeting until Greg Zinder, our true chair, can come here as a meeting. And I will open this with a public hearing on SP 23001 LJE properties. It's a three lot subdivision at Seven Lords Lane, map one lot 29. Is there anyone here from the public would like to be heard on this matter? We do have it on the agenda for later as well, so we will also answer your questions then. No?
We're here to listen.
Okay, that's fine. Anyone? No, fine. We will close the public hearing at, wow, still seven o'clock. Look at that. Okay, lightning speed. We will now begin our regular meeting. If people want to and are able, you could please rise and say the prayers. All right. We have nobody on Zoom, so I don't think we need to go through who is here. We do need to say that you were sufficiently an alternate, but we will enpanel you for the meeting as a voting member tonight. Thank you, Kristin. Thank you for your service. Okay. Public comment. Is there anything that is not on the agenda that anybody would like to comment on? No? Okay, we will close public comments and move on to approval of meeting minutes of March 1st. Anybody in the planning board have any comments on it? I actually read them. I found nothing. Great. If there's no amendments or corrections, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. In a second. Second from Bill. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All standing? Great. Passes unanimously. And we are onto new business blocks. It's just moving right along here, isn't it?
That's great. Good.
Okay, new business. So first off is SP 23002 Birk County Playground Modification. And we have, you know, why don't you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Neil Repogan with Southern Components here behalf of Birk Academy. This project is a fairly minor modification to the existing site. It's for the existing playground basketball court area. That's just on the side of the bus lanes. If you're familiar with campus. Just just to the side of the existing bus lanes there. It's going to consist of taking out some of the pavement that's included in the basketball area. As well as pavement in the main entryway that entered the school. And it's going to be several areas of new kind of sweeping walkways and then do quite a few play elements that are a little more a little more in tune with what, you know, the kids are looking for nowadays and what's been kind of shown to be a more you know, more appropriate play area. So this is our site plan that's to be approved and this is kind of the more basic plan which shows here's what you have now. Here's what's proposed to go in there. The only real engineering that was done on this was just determining the drainage that was required to drain the the rubberized surface that they're going to have at the bottom of the slide area here. One of those porous rubber surfaces. So you have to do pour it on and then the water just infiltrates through it. We're collecting that. It's all going into the same stormwater system that's out there now. There really wasn't an appreciable shade in the cover as far as impervious area on the site. It was more shifting things around and placing new play elements in the area. I'll just for everyone's information, we brought some colored renderings of the playground. Just so you guys could kind of get an idea of what it would look like once it's completed. So currently this this area where we have this entrance that's coming in, this is just that paved entrance that comes all the way up to the school. And then this is basically filled out in the existing state and that's just the basketball court. They maintain, they're going to maintain, you know, one half court here. They continue to play basketball. And then the rest of it is just kind of enhanced, enhanced play features. And for the most part, it tries to incorporate a lot of the existing features. A lot of the existing trees are going to remain what they have out there. This is kind of a this is a view as you're coming in.
I'm sorry. Can you make a favor? Can you sort of put your easel over there so the people sitting here can also? We can see it, I think. And we also have all of them in a notebook and that way we can share. Thank you.
Absolutely.
It's almost basically you want to donate.
See here, I mean, really just put these together. Landscape architect, you know, got these renderings together so we could come in and show you know, what they envisioned this to look like once everything is built out and the improvements are made. So this is kind of the main entry coming in from the bus, from the bus lanes. And this is where that former walkway just kind of came right into the building here. And now we have more of a meandering entrance, a lot more place gate features. It really breaks up the landscape out there, kind of a more, you know, more inviting area for the kids. Look at this section here. Here's that entrance way we're looking at from before. So this is how it kind of comes to the site. There's a new slide feature here that can be built up. So the kids can use that. It's not going to be as much, you know, hard escape structure things to climb on. A lot more natural features. They're going to be utilized at this point. Is, this is, I'm looking at that where the same basketball court is. They said they're going to be trying to utilize as much, you know, natural, natural features as they can. So this is kind of a treehouse area that's going to go around. I mean, just some tree. Going to protect as much of the natural environment as they can out here. I think that's next, the basic rundown. It's not very, not a very complex project, not a very involved project as far as you know, the engineering design goes. We did, we were required to submit a notification to the DEP for exempt an exempt expansion to the school just because of the change on the site plan. It already had a site location approval. So we've been, we already submitted that to the state and they had no problems with it. So as far as every, all the other permitting goes, we are good to go as long as you have planning board and code enforcement. Well, any questions?
Would anybody on the thing would like to comment? Give you a sec. I have one question. Can you point out any features that might be ADA accessible? That might be accessible?
The main portion.
Just out of curiosity.
As far as the ADA portion. The entrance and everything were kept ADA accessible. So we have the, you know, the slopes and the grades to make the ADA accessible coming through. Similar to what it was before. And then it was also an effort made to make sure that this, the entrance all the way up here to the to the slide was accessible. And then from there, it would require assistance to get through the large looks like a culvert pipe. It's a large, a large opening to crawl through on this side. But they wanted to be able to get people up at the top of this slide. Then with the distance you did from there.
Is there? Are there any features that are specifically made for kids who might have a disability?
That it wasn't presented to us that way when the landscape architect came through. They basically said, we want to make sure that they can access, they can access all the features via the walkway. And then the features themselves. I'm not sure about the ADA accessibility on the features.
All right. All right. No other comments? So with the opportunity, I believe, to vote straight on this to approve it, yes?
Correct.
Okay. So I suggest if no one has any comments, and it seems to me at least reasonable, would anyone like to make a motion for approval? I made a motion for approval. Thank you. A second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstains? We pass unanimously. Thank you. Great. Thank you very much.
The board can also, at this time, review and approve the funding to pack if you'd like to.
Is there any reason to wait?
There's no reason really to wait. They're in your vendors. So.
They're in our vendors. Okay, one more second.
Okay.
Let's do that now. We don't have to do it later. That way we'll get it all done at once. Am I going to find it right after the application?
It should be in the front. Yep. It should be in the front. It's a letter from the police chief, a letter from the fire chief, and then it's findings back. Or backwards or. So you're finding that?
No, I have a fleet speed part tweet. And then. Oh, there we go.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did everybody else find theirs? Okay, why don't we take it?
Do you want some?
To review.
Do you have findings of that?
Yeah, it's in here. Okay.
Excellent. Who fills in the amount of the shorting?
The shorty. It's great you asked that question because I just learned this myself.
Okay.
So what a shorty is, is the amount of the site plan, how much it would cost to do the site work as a whole. Do you take out all the playground equipment and those features and how they get that number? And that number came directly from Birk Academy. The whole project consists by just being herself and that is $250,000.
Um, and do we need to do anything?
You need to motion to approve the funding effects and conditions. And then we have everything for you guys to sign.
Great. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, give everybody another sec. We'll get this done.
The conditions are obsolete on the thing and I just read through them and they aren't all right. So.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Second. Second bill. Does that the bill show today? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Pass unanimously. Thank you.
So glad. Okay, I have the plan. So we're just going to take a quick break for a second. And then the planning board members sign the plans and sign the findings of the pack deals and imagine with their. And we'll have to fix that on the. I have the copy right there. It's actually, you can find the thing over there.
Great. You're next.
Yeah.
Sorry, you're right.
So this is what I'm going to do. Let me send it over to you and then you find it and just send it back to me tomorrow. Well, thanks. Do you have any questions for the board?
You know, they make specially accessible places of playground and now. You might want to pass that on. Just saying. Just saying.
Zach, have you some?
Yeah.
Okay.
Of the area.
Why is that signing? I just want to let the board members know that we have a gentleman in the room who has applied to join the planning board as an alternate. It's Aaron. He's sitting over here. See how much fun we're having.
Oh, yeah.
So he's here just tracking him.
Welcome. Um, while we're doing this.
Yeah.
I'm going to tell it.
I'm going to write it to the trojans.
You guys missed the last one.
How many plans are there?
Four?
Okay.
This one.
We like copies. On these afternoon.
They're not going to, you're not going to register. You don't have to register these things. So. Yeah.
Thank you for your patience out there. Oh, that was. Everyone's last one was next. Are we ready? Present this app. Okay. Are you David?
I am Austin.
Austin. All right. Austin, and you're representing.
Uh, I have a springer. Uh, yes. So the, um, the applicant is actually Scott Holland, um, owner of the property is Mr. Springer, but he will be selling the property.
Right. So, um, we are moving on to S P dash twenty-three dash zero zero three. David Springer, three lots subdivision on Lord's Lane Extension. Um, for anybody not familiar with it, uh, Lord's Lane crosses over two thirty-six of it heads. I guess that would be east, right? And, uh, I think that area is already cleared out, um, last year. So. Hold on, will we? Dan, are you coming back? Okay.
And so it's not loud. Yeah.
All right. Would you like to, um, Austin?
Thank you.
Did you get his name?
Yep.
Okay, great.
So as I stated, my name is Austin Fagan with B H two M. Here representing Scott Holland. Um, the property on Lord's Lane, uh, is currently one lot. That was purchased a few years back.
Hello, sir.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
It's actually Lord's Lane Extension, and because we have two Lord's Lane projects here today, you're going to have to specify that.
Okay. Lord's Lane. Um, no worries, no worries. Uh, so Lord's Lane Extension. Um, Lord's Lane Extension is a roadway that was redesigned and approved by the town. A few years back, um, it was built and, uh, reviewed by myself and, um. All trees were analyzed by the town, um, and it wasn't a dirt roadway. Uh, as you can see from this plan, uh, we're posing three separate lots from the one existing lot. Uh, the only reason was for the board is because more than, uh, two lots are being split. In a five-year period, uh, which triggered subdivision law. There's no additional infrastructure that'll be created as part of this project. Uh, it's very straightforward as, uh, subdivisions go. I'd like to get any initial issues the board may see out of the way and, uh, be happy to answer any questions that you have tonight. Uh, that being said. Now.
Um, I, I have a, sorry. Does anybody on the planning board have a question beside me? Or do you want to install while you look at the plan possession? Uh, it looks like on this plan submitted, which is I assume existing, there are some buildings in the front of those. Isn't your proposed?
Uh, so you have to survey it.
Yes, yes, I do.
Uh, so. There were some buildings, uh, prior to now. I'm not.
Oh, they were, um, they were demoed when you did the, right. Okay.
The old winds, the old winds, while the wind was stopping. Okay. Yeah, several small buildings that have all been removed.
All right. Um. And in this existing survey, it also shows, is that a stone wall? A stone wall? Has that been removed as well?
Yeah.
No, that's still there. Okay.
If you want your envelope.
Oh, my.
You can see the big plan.
The big plan.
It's, it's very lightly, uh, shown on this stone wall. It is still.
Okay.
Yeah, no way, sure.
Actually, we go back to our second one though. So I assume, um, it's not shared on your plan there, but on the survey again, that the area that has the easement for, um, C N P is this piece between two thirty-six and your property line. Is that right?
This probably about C N P.
Yeah, okay.
Everybody at home.
I, I actually have one of the, chance, anything else you, do you have anything?
It's pretty straightforward.
Straightforward.
The applicant came in, well, not the applicant, but we did have a meeting on this side already. So we've already done extensive, extensive research and pretty set direct.
Um, can I ask, is there any water going through the property?
Uh, in terms of, uh, utility wise?
No, no, I mean, sorry. No, I'm sorry. Like, you know, uh, broke for a stream or.
Uh, there are no brooks or streams that were located on site. Uh, there are two, uh, small, or.
I know there's grain. I know there's huge amounts of grain in front of it for that.
Yeah. So this, uh, this one dotted line on the right hand of the, uh, eastern portion of the property with the wetland. And there's also one small project towards the back of the property and the remaining land. Uh, but no water bodies.
Lord's, Lord's Brook is on the other side of.
The other side. Okay. Um. The other side of the right away, you mean? It comes down on this, the south side of Lord's Lane before it crosses over there. Gotcha. Okay. Just checking.
What is the total square footage of the three different? Blocks?
So the total square footage is about eight acres.
Of the three, of each block.
Uh, so each lot is around two and a half acres. That's better, right? Uh, with, uh, the remaining land being slightly larger than the other two, but, uh, we're looking at a hundred and ten thousand square feet, a hundred and nine thousand. Uh, and acres forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty, so. About two and a half.
Can I ask on lot two where you have, um, you've, I assume this is wetland, right? Limited wetlands? Is that actually going to be buildable? Is that enough in the corner or one corner or the other? Because the road, I assume. People are going to drive it off Lord's Lane and the road there, right?
Yeah. So, uh, the scale of the plan being, um, one inch equals fifty feet. You know, there is approximately two hundred feet on the.
Okay.
When, uh, the eastern side of that wetland. So there should be.
Is there a setback from there?
Uh, from wetlands? Off the top of my head, I don't know without, without, without the ordinance.
Because it's not, it's not really.
Okay. All right. That's it for me. Anybody else?
You went.
Great. Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
So are you all set? So the board should, um, either, A. If they have more questions, they can have them come back for a sketch plan and second sketch plan. But the board should at this time, since there was no question, um, then then put preliminary.
Okay. We need a vote.
Um, you don't need a motion. You just need to put it on record.
Okay. Uh, we all agree to go on record to, uh, decide the sketch plan and move on to the preliminary here. So, great. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Very well done.
Have a great evening. So I will, I'll be back for.
We're going to be done.
Well, you'll, you'll. Plans off, and then we'll.
Good. Thank you.
Have a great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eli.
Yeah.
All right. We are on to old business. Um, and we are going to be discussing the preliminary plan, um, for S P twenty-three dash zero zero one L V E properties. It's a three lots subdivision. At seven Lords Lane. And it's Nate, right?
Yes, thank you.
So in front of this packet, I just want the board members to know that you will see, um, a letter for action reasons. The name, Nathan can, um, speak on behalf of L J E Properties as the owners out of town.
It's warm.
Not here.
Yeah.
You didn't tell me exactly.
It wouldn't be appropriate to stay on camera anyway.
So, um, I have to admit, I don't remember if we had questions from the last. Meeting that we expected answered, but I do have some comments already, but if, do you have things that you wanted to, um, address that came up at the last meetings?
Um, the only thing that, uh, Tom had indicated was that you needed some extra lines for signing and that everything else looked good. Um, I'll do my best to, uh, uh, represent.
All right. So, um, do any other, uh, board members have comments or questions?
I. I guess I, I'd like a clarification, um, in the lining of the fact.
We're not there yet. We're at preliminary plan.
Okay.
No way.
Yeah, I can see if we have to do that. Okay. So, um. I live down the street and I go by this place all the time. Um, I was convinced that Lord's Brook goes through there. I looked on Google Maps and there it is. I looked on the city tax map and it also indicates that Lord Brook goes through that property. It's not on your plan. I don't really understand why. It got mentioned in our last meeting.
Oh, you mean labeled.
What?
You mean labeled or?
I, I mean, indicated in any way, shape or form. In fact, in the findings of facts, and maybe this isn't you, it also says there's no wetland, and I think there is, because I remember. It being pointed out and actually I think that is in fact labeled. So there's, I'm a little worried about that and it means that, um, the property is. Lord Brook is contained in the shoreline and slope district. And it means there are certain setbacks in play that, um, you have to adhere to.
Um, I mean, I had. Um, indicated with the drainage flow areas. These little arrows.
Okay, but, but this is the, this is supposed to be a site survey and you're missing sort of a key element on it.
Um, well, so I had, it kind of wanders and it actually disappears. The brook kind of disappears. It was kind of marshy. So I just kind of identified it with the, uh, the drainage arrows. Um, but. Uh, I mean, you're talking about literally the two banks and. More, 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 uh, definition on that. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's, it's, it's a brook. It's listed as part of our ordinance. It means that it has to be indicated on your survey. And that, you know, we have to have some indication that, you know. Before we prove it, that, um, any. Anything affected by it will be a part of our conditions.
Okay.
So, um, and here, here.
I mean, I could do that.
Well, I hope so. Um. Here's, I mean, I'm happy to, hold on, we'll see if I can, is the right size. So here's the city tax map, the town tax map.
Yes.
And here's two thirty-six, here's Lord's Lane, here's the extension we just talked about.
Yep.
And there it is coming through there, which means that on your property. I line it up. It, it actually seems to be. Like fairly prominent going through and out this back section here. So, and if this is it. Right?
Um, it actually comes, comes in right through here. Okay. And comes in here.
Across.
Yes, yeah. All right. I, I certainly do that.
Okay. I, I'm sort of surprised it wasn't on there at the beginning, I guess.
Um, well, a-again, in the, the midsection, in the middle, it kind of disappears, um, because it, it flows out. Um, identified the deepest parts, unfortunately, by stepping into it, but, um. Um, it was so marshy there, it, there's almost not a distinct.
I understand. I understand. It, it flows or doesn't flow at, at different times. We have thousands of brooks around us. So it's sort of like that, but in the spring, it'll be there and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hurry up.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Oh, hold on. We'll get to you. Finish ours and then working like your commute.
Okay. The question that I have is that, you know, fine, oh, I'm not, sorry.
Sorry.
All right. If there's no other questions from the planning board, we will ask the public if you would like to speak.
Yeah, I'd like to know, um, this is the, the linear map that we've got. Do the circles represent the buildable area of each lot? I know this were, um, just sites that Tom had asked me to, to see how they would fit. Um. Okay. Just as a, as a generic site. It wasn't, it's not specifically just buildable. He, he had walked it and he said, here are the areas. That I think are the best. And just, and just give me a, give me a circle there that, that gives me that dimension so that I know. What I can, you know, what I can envision usable. Yeah. Okay. So that's basically, that would take care of any setbacks from the road. Yeah, yeah.
A hundred, a hundred feet from the high water line. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Which we don't know because it's not spring.
Right.
Okay.
After the, after the last storm, it probably running pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay. I guess, I guess that's all.
Any, any other?
I mean, I could add the setback line. To show, you know, literally where it is.
I really think you should.
Yeah, okay. It, it's not because these aren't the setback lines. No. They're defined by the.
It's the wetland.
No, yeah, that's just the way it is. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So the setback would be a hundred feet beyond that.
Beyond that, yeah. And a-actually, the shoreline protection. Shoreline and slope district. Has actually a sort of a two hundred and fifty foot setback, but you're allowed to build within a hundred feet. So.
All right.
I'm not entirely clear on myself on that distinction, but. You're allowed to build within a hundred feet of it. There might be other things you're not allowed to do.
Yeah, just, just one more thing. Um, on this little plan, there, it looks like a right of way in the driveway coming off this. So those, is that the right of way to the cemetery? Yeah. So the, the cemetery, um, is listed, it's in the deed that says. That access is supposed to come from two thirty-six. But it's where. Um, that's the logistically probably the best place for it. Um, so that's where we decided to place it.
Sorry, we're, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Whether, whether people would actually use it there or another place on that lot, you know, that would be. Yeah. Well, they've always used ours. They've always used ours.
Oh, can I?
Oh, really?
Way and walk down that road and then.
Oh, no.
We can, we're far coming to keep that to say.
Yeah. That was kind of established when hand agency was looking at the cemetery. The previous owners of fifteen Lord's Lane. Left them parked there because there's no viable way to get a lawnmower across.
Right, right. Can, can I ask where the cemetery is on the, on your plan?
Um, there's a, there's a little truck. There's a little crookie.
Yep. That's it right there. Yep. But it's not on your property. It's on the other side or it's rather, or?
It's still owned by the.
It's, it's between that property. But what cases and around its property of the being more sane.
It's at the bottom of ours.
Okay.
It was odd that the, the, the access was specifically. Said from Harold Eldow.
That is.
Uh, which is, yeah, which is. And if it's going to be by two thirty-six, as you mentioned, you can't get her.
So you're going to put an easement in this little edge here. Is that what that is?
That's the second one. Oh, maybe that would get you the third.
Oh, this, sorry. Is this your?
That little line, I think it's the line that, that. Two thirty-six. To the cemetery. Yes. But it's through a market area that may require something to allow you to get a lawnmower nature thing to it. Yeah, that's what the deed is, he says.
Okay. Any other comments from the public?
Oh, so.
Thank you. Any more from the planning board? All right. Ken, what is our next step?
So I think that, right, we can accept this obvious, well, you guys can choose to or not do, but this isn't a final plan. So. Well, I think you should accept, um. The narrative with the modifications asked, and when they come back for final plan, everything that you've asked for tonight could be on that final plan, and then you could accept it at a later meeting.
Great.
You're not ready to do that, I don't think. But that's up to the board.
Um, so let me see if I can just summarize. We really need more distinction around Lord's Brook where it comes in and, and having it labeled and shown.
Yep.
And, um, if you could label the easement or the right of ways are also there, just a little more language and verbiage would be great.
Yeah.
Also indicators of what. If those are your buildable lots, I guess. I don't know if you want to use this or not. So, and also outline the hundred foot setback. That would be great. Is there anything else anybody thinks we need to ask for on the?
Is it in a map, one point?
I don't think it is.
No.
Certainly did a hydrantage.
Is there access from two thirty-six that's not marshy or will need development? For the third lot, I think.
They will have to get a D O T approval because it's a state road in order to put a driveway there. But that's the plan, right?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that'd be evaluated. Yeah.
No, it'll be in our condition by soon. But they have to get approval before they can.
Good.
Yes.
Um, so I just want to clarify, you're asking that the plan show building envelope of each lot as well, because of the wetlands, is that what you're asking for?
Yes.
So you need to be specific.
Yeah, so that would be front, front yard and side yards and all that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it going to be part of this lot number three to establish? The right of way is accessible to the cemetery?
I, I think this dotted line is what, is that what is already in the D, Nate?
It's in the D, but it's not in real.
Um, it's.
I was wondering if it's going to be part of the, uh. Lot development to make.
Lot development to make, make it accessible.
So can I, can I ask, is, is the deed in the package?
Yes.
Hold on one sec. Let's see if we have the deed and see what it says about the right.
If it's mine, I can get it for you, because it's mine, sorry.
I'll take names with.
It's not in there.
It's not in there, okay. So the deed says that there is a right way or an easement?
An easement.
Okay.
To get to the, um.
From two thirty-six.
To the cemetery from two thirty-six.
Okay.
Uh, interestingly enough, it says by foot and vehicle.
Okay.
Well, that was written, where?
That's what it says.
Um, okay.
And, and, and distinct, um.
So it is, so it does sound like, um, where the brook goes through and that you delineated is sort of wetland, so that wouldn't be possible to drive up to that, which is why they did move them all the other way, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um.
I mean, I could certainly speak to Tom and.
Well.
See if I, uh. A better way to resolve that, because it's.
I, I don't want to say about that, because, I mean, it's enforceable, if somebody wants to enforce it, this would have to then.
Right.
I'm not sure it's on us to enforce it, um, on the other hand. Part of approval, it might be making accommodations to make sure, you know, the letter of your deed is true and that people can access it, so I don't know what that would look like.
I'd say that just, it's not really that abstract, because we did have two families, one that came down from, what was that place, Fulton? And someone else from, that girl just said, forum, forum, you know, they came down to look at Lord's, Lord's Cemetery, the Lord's Cemetery. So, um, and people do, I mean, it comes in phases, but in the summer, Lord's family people do come, but they come through ours, so. You know, especially when we're gonna have three extra neighbors, it would be nice if we didn't have all the other people coming as well, so if there's an official. Access. If it's all being developed, it would be a good thing. But at the minute, I don't know, it would be very difficult to get up there, and as far as mowing the cemetery and things, we do it. And that's very nice of you, so, uh, thank you, yes, but it's poison ivy and all.
We'll bring out a boat for you. So, I don't know, um, if we want to ask the town attorney to weigh in on whether we can require. That it somehow be made accessible with the deed. Has it, that's not, I don't think that's really our job.
Doesn't have to go, the deed, the deed, so whatever the deed says has to be. Um, we can ask Bill, what he's gonna say to go by the deed.
Go by the deed.
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess, you know, it, it would be that it has to be made accessible sometime, if that's what's needed. But that's not why you're here, so that's what I, that's what I think their job.
Yeah, and it's. Me representing Tom, I don't know.
That's a enforcement thing.
Yeah. We'll have the code enforcement officer weighing on that later.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, that is excellent to bring your attention, I appreciate that, and, um, we are going to then. I think you have, are you clear on what we've asked for?
Yes, yeah, I had to put a note about, we don't know well doing wetlands, I didn't realize that that was referencing.
Yeah, yeah, because it is. Okay. Um, we don't need a motion, we just say preliminary is over, come back. We're gonna, you know, with the next time and we're good to go.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Thank you. I do that, and you got, it's public hearing discussion, that was it. Okay, uh, I believe we're, have included, um, projects. Are there any member comments? Would anybody like to text Greg and tell me doesn't, nothing? You have, great, okay, wow, this is so exciting for me. Nothing, go once, go twice? No, great, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All in favor? Woo hoo, look at that, forty minutes.